Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. All rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Role call, please.
Councilmember Murray.
President.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Accounted for.
That concludes role call.
Thank you. Do we have any late changes to the agenda?
No, we don't, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So next will be public comment. Do we have anyone out in our public that has signed up?
Dale Jeremiah? Are you going to speak? Oh, you're just doing -- okay. No one else has signed up and no one is pre-registered online to speak.
All right. Thank you. So, next is the consent calendar. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the consent calendar items A through F.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And next, number five on our agenda is the public hearing and vote on ordinance for six-year transportation improvement program with our traffic engineer, John Merrick, and Public Works Director, Jesse Hoffman.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and council. Thank you for having us. John Merrick, our traffic engineer, will be making his presentation. I'll be here to help with questions.
Is this his first meeting here?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Welcome.
Although I do recognize some of your faces from City Breakfast. Councilmember Murray, it was nice sitting next to you. And Councilmember Woodard, it was great having you at the table. You have a great sense of humor, by the way. Okay. Let's see. I'm trying to figure out how I get into -- got it there to the --
What's?
Gotcha. Thank you. Gotcha. Okay.
I think you should be able to put it in slideshow too.
Oh, yeah. Oops. That's what I want to do. I wanted to do it like -- there you go. Okay. So, thanks for letting me join you today and tell you a little bit about the transportation improvement program, the six-year TIP. All right, Pat, look at this. Again, my name is John Merrick. I'm the new city traffic engineer. I've been with City of Mount Lake Terrace now for just a little over three months, so still feeling -- finding my way around, but it's -- this has been really great. Really enjoyed kind of being part of it, becoming part of the team. Purpose today is to provide you a little bit of an overview and an update on the six-year transportation improvement program called, referred to as the TIP. I'll give you a little bit of information about the TIP and really, this is also serving as a public hearing and your vote on adopting the updated TIP. And I'll kind of go into a little bit of why that's important. So, background for the meeting today. I'll give you a little bit of background on the TIP, you know, what it is. I'm sure you're all very familiar with it, why it's important. I'll talk a little bit about kind of the cost of the six-year TIP and where those revenues we are anticipating they're coming from. And then I'll go into a little bit of detail about some of the projects that are included on the TIP. The six-year TIP is really, it's basically a list of programs and prioritized projects that the city's identified to kind of work towards meeting its goals and needs for transportation elements in the city. The TIP is required, it's required, excuse me, every city, town, and county is required to submit a six-year TIP and update it annually. Once it's updated, it's filed with the state. The state then includes those projects kind of in the state, the larger state transportation improvement program. Once they're included in that program, they then become eligible for funding, for federal and state funding. So, that's why it's kind of important. So if we want to look towards getting funding for some of the projects, larger-scale projects that we want to do throughout the years, then they really need to be included in the state's transportation improvement program. The goals of the TIP really are just kind of reflected in the approved transportation master plan, the 2020 transportation master plan. And they consist primarily of kind of our core annual programs and then a list of prioritized larger-scale programs or projects that get us towards kind of safety improvements, infrastructure, and maintenance, repair, that we're looking for over the next six years. So some of the, excuse me, some of the annual programs include the, our asphalt overlay program. We've got about $700,000 for our overlay program. And that's really helping us maintain, come on our existing infrastructure. So as we do that asphalt overlay on many of our streets, and it helps extend the life of those streets so they don't need to be reconstructed so quickly. Similarly, we've got money towards our signal infrastructure, so our signal cabinet replacement and controller replacements. And then the other type of programs we have really are geared towards enhancing safety and mobility. So things like our sidewalk reconstruction or construction program, ADA programs, our bike route program, bicycle routing program, and our traffic calming program. As you can see, we've spent about $10,000 for both our, on both bicycle and traffic calming programs and about a little over $100,000 a year for our sidewalk programs. Aside from the annual programs, then we have a whole host of kind of small to kind of large-scale improvement projects. These are kind of, you know, kind of one-time projects, but they're very, they're, they can be large and extend over several years. As you can see on the top of the list, we've got our Main Street project. You've heard a lot about that and know a lot about that. Transportation Connection Corridor project. Those are kind of some of the larger ones. And then below is a list of various roadway reconstruction projects, sidewalk projects, intersection improvement projects, all geared towards increasing or enhancing mobility, multimodal mobility throughout the city and its, and safety. When we look at that list of projects, the cost for that project, particularly for the projects that are geared for, for the next two years, total cost for those projects is about $58 million, $58 million with the bulk of that coming, really going towards the Main Street project. So $43 million towards Main Street and then the other 15 million is for our, kind of our annual, a lot of our annual programs like traffic calming and striping, pavement reconstruction, bicycle and pedestrian improvements, and then roadway reconstruction. But you can see kind of in this first, how the large percentage that Main Street takes up of that, of the next two years. When we kind of pull back even farther and, excuse me, and look at the total six-year TIP, the total cost for the, for the six-year TIP is $138 million. There again, most of that, when you look at percentage-wise, the bulk of that still is going towards Main Street project, 65% of it. And then around 22% is going towards roadway construction projects, rehabbing a number of streets, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And then bike and pet improvements, about 8%. So then it's like, how are we paying for this? If you look at our revenue sources, we kind of have kind of our annual revenues, which are repeated, you know, throughout each year, and supplemental revenues. On our annual programs, this includes things like the state gas tax, our refunding, transportation benefit district funds, all told, that comes to kind of annually, we receive about $1.5 million a year just from those annual revenue sources. Then we have supplemental funds, and these are grants that we're applying for, have received or are applying for. And this includes things like the Department of Commerce grant, state TIP funding, ARPA funds. As you know, we're applying for a raised grant, about $24 million to help with Main And so those are kind of some of the various supplemental, supplemental resources that we're looking for. And if you can see, we've identified, we have identified many for the '24, '25 years. Outside '26 to '29, that's what we'll be working on as we look to identify those projects and match them up with potential grant funding opportunities. We'll be filling more of that '26 through '29, those calendar years out as we move forward Taking a look at the '24 and '25 revenues that we're anticipating, about 61, it's a total of 61 million in revenues coming in. 75% of that is, would be coming from federal, state, and local grants. That includes local dollars like the utility fund. 22% would be, we'd be looking for from annual revenues such as the gas tax and transportation benefit district, and 2% still to be determined. Those, we've got a couple of projects, like sidewalk projects that we're still, we'll still be looking to apply for funding to, for construction. Kind of pulling back a little bit farther, looking at our, the total six-year TIP revenue sources for that, you can see the largest part of that is still to be determined. And that's because, as we mentioned, we've got a lot of projects that are extended out to, through to the year '29 that we haven't identified those funding sources, but we will be working towards identifying those in the coming years as those, as those projects get closer to construction or anticipated construction. But aside from the, you know, from that, so 45% of, 45 million of that, the next year, six years from, would be, would go towards Main Street III. And then about 50% would be, would be from federal, state, and local grants, 20% from annual revenues, and 30%, still to be determined. Let me, I want to, so for our projects that we have listed on the, on the, on the TIP, the top project obviously is the Main Street project, which many of you, everyone knows a lot about. Kind of other projects that are included on the TIP include the Transportation Connection Corridor project. This project would upgrade the trails through Veterans Park, enhancing it with asphalt walkways, including lighting in the park, new pedestrian bridge. And then it also includes a pedestrian plaza on the corner of 236th and Van Rye. The anticipated start of construction for this project is this year, 2024. Another project this year, that will be starting this year, as a matter of fact, starting just today, is the 66th pavement reconstruction project. This is funded with TIB funding and utility funding. The project reconstructs 66th Avenue West from 220th up to the inner urban trail, full pavement reconstruction, and then will include sidewalk rehabilitation and curb ramps as well, and then an enhanced trail crossing at the inner urban. Another project on the, on the TIP is the 260th and 48th Avenue intersection improvement. This is a safety improvement, really geared towards enhancing pedestrian safety and the crossing at this intersection. The project includes constructing curb bulbs on all four corners, mark crosswalk across 48th Avenue West, which would include a rectangular rapid flashing beacon to assist pedestrians crossing, and then constructing sidewalk, kind of missing segments of sidewalk on the approach to, on each of the approaches. Another project geared towards pedestrian and bicycle safety is the 48th Avenue Bicycle and Pedestrian Connection. This is really updating or, years ago, there was a project to kind of create a sidewalk by just installing some curving along 48th Avenue. That, that project has really kind of outlived its use and is really not a great walking facility anymore. So this project would look to install more of a, kind of a sidewalk that meets our current standards and bike lanes along the stretch of 48th. Next project I'd like to talk about is 214th Street Sidewalk Project. This project would fill missing gaps on 214th Street between 44th and 40th Avenue West. This really provides a connection to the backside of the high school and enhancing pedestrian safety kind of from the school to the neighbor, the connecting neighborhood to the north. This would be a project that we'd look to kind of construct in 2026. Total, the estimated cost, $600,000. I think that cost might need to be updated just a little bit more, which I will, would like to kind of update in the next, in the 2025 TIP six-year TIP. And then another pedestrian safety project included in the TIP is the 52nd Avenue Sidewalk Project. This is a project that would construct sidewalk on the east side of 52nd Avenue West from 222nd Street down to 224th Street. It's a missing segment, and there again, provides a key connection to the elementary school. Right now, we have, would like to tentatively shoot for our 2026 construction, but we still need to identify a funding source available for that. Some of the programs that the TIP, that are included in the TIP include the asphalt overlay project. This, we've updated the funding for this program from $240,000 a year to $700,000 this year. And that's to account for recognizing that with the previous funding, we, we're still kind of losing ground. And so really, in order to kind of stay ahead of the pace, that additional funding was needed to really maintain kind of our, our streets and reduce the chance of, or risk of needing kind of full reconstruction. The longer you let streets go or the, the, longer between maintenance, the more likely you start to degrade those, the roadway and really need, get into the need for a kind of full construction. So that's our overlay program. But we, the TIP includes a couple of reconstruction projects. That includes 44th Avenue West from 212th to 228th, 220th Street, really from the inner urban's trail all the way to 52nd Avenue West, and then 244th Street from 56th to Cedarway. All told, the reconstruction projects are about 27.2 million. One of the costs that gets included with roadway reconstruction, they get fairly expensive because as part of that, the requirement, is the requirement to upgrade kind of all ADA, all the crossings so that they're ADA compliant. So there's a lot of curb ramp and sidewalk and crossing work that's included in a lot of these reconstruction projects. The TIP also includes kind of our signal projects. As I mentioned before earlier, our annual program is funded to replace controllers and cabinets. But on top of that, we've got some projects for, to help improve traffic flow and efficiency. We have the 220th Street Adaptive Signal Project. That's a project that we're working with WashDOT on that would put an adaptive, that would put adaptive signal control on the signals on 220th from I-5 to Aurora. With adaptive signals, what that, with that technology, the signals are able to kind of adapt their, the signal timing to real-time input on what traffic conditions are like at, at those intersections. So rather than just running fixed time or fixed timing plans, they can read the, the traffic demands at the intersection at that time and adjust the signal timing kind of to meet those, those needs. In addition to that project, we've got the 220th and 58th Street Project. This is a project I think that's been on the list and in the eyes and hearts of many residents in the city, looking at how to make 220th and 58th operate a little bit better. I think there's a, this project will evaluate whether a signal or a roundabout might be the preferred solution and then come up with some design funding for that, looking to kind of kick that, that evaluation off in 2026 with construction funds still to be identified. Some of that could come from potential development project on 58th north of 220th. Other signal projects, 236th and 58th. That project is, would be part of the, the design for that would be part of the Main Street project, but the construction of that would be separate. So the construction cost for that would be about $261,000. That's a project that still needs to identify construction funds. And then signal, actually, it's an intersection improvement project at 212th and 48th, and that's a project looking to improve the pedestrian connection at that intersection. That's kind of a dog leg or a skewed intersection and looking at how to improve pedestrian connections across 212th at that intersection. So those are just some of the projects and programs that are included in the TIP. In the council meeting material, there's a, the list, the total list of the, our complete list of the projects, as I mentioned before, if you're to look that, look at that versus the 2023 list, you'll see they're, they're nearly identical. So it's kind of carrying a lot of those projects over from last year to next year and kind of anticipating kind of where they'll fall in the next coming six years. So looking to adopt the 2024 TIP and then incorporate that into the, the comp plan. So staff is here to kind of recommend kind of the council adoption of it, of this, and then inclusion into the, into this, and then filing it with the state. I think that's the end of my presentation and open up for discussion or questions.
All right. So before we open public hearing, we can ask questions. All right. Does anyone have any questions or who is first?
So John.
Go ahead.
Welcome to this city.
Thanks.
Sorry, I didn't get to sit with you at the breakfast, but it was nice that we spread out. Usually council sits at one table, so it's kind of nice when we spread out and we get to meet people. My question is a little bit off of the, the TIP, but I want to bring it up just because it's been on my mind for quite a while. And I've brought it up before, but I think this would be a good time to bring it up too. With light rail approaching, I see a lot of roads getting used a lot more than they ever have been. People coming up through Linwood, Lake Forest Park, coming up through Edmunds, coming in from Seattle or Shoreline. And one of the projects on the list is 44th, and that was supposed to be two-laned and a turn lane. And I think we put that on our plan in about 2008 or 2009. And so I see it's not going to get updated until 2028. And so it's interesting how, you know, some projects get moved around in different things. And, and so be it. I'm not bringing, I'm bringing it up just because now would be a good time to look at like 212th, and we've talked about putting in, and I think maybe you did, you did say that, putting in a signal, signal there on 212th and 48th. And because we've seen accidents there. And then on 212th, having a free right, you know, we did have a motorcyclist, I don't know if he died because of the turn or lane, or it was an impaired driver. But I know, I've driven that street before, and when the sun's hitting you in the face and you're trying to take a free left, and with that road getting more impacted with light rail, I'm wondering if we're looking at signal changes as well and looking at the impacts to the increased flow of traffic. And, and maybe it's, you know, looking at our projects here, I see a lot of things on here, you know, that relate to schools, but it's also, maybe we could have, I don't want to say separate project, but a project where we keep tabs on how light rail is impacting all our roads and where they're coming from. And if we do a good study on that, can we beg, borrow, and plead from the state to, you know, jump up and down Mount Lake Terrace as being impacted? You know, we, we need funding because of, well, the right rail coming through. But, I mean, I can see a whole bunch of different projects that need to be looked at as well. You know, you've got 58th, 56th. I mean, I know we're throwing, and please don't, we're not throwing money at, but we are, you know, constantly looking at that road. And I know if you get behind a school bus and it's a two-lane road, you can be backed up quite a bit. And so I'm just wondering how we're going to be impacted or how we're going to be impacted on 58th. But, sorry, I had a whole bunch of different notes, and I'm trying to say them really fast, but the main thing was really looking at how light rail will be impacting us. And I know we've got all these wonderful projects on, but I have a feeling that by 2028, 2029, you know, we're going to be looking at a lot different projects. And I know the roundabout has been on the books for quite some time too. And I guess I bring this all up too because I was looking at a Facebook post and somebody was saying how bad 56th was and how we were spending all our money rebuilding the apartments. And it's not so much that we're rebuilding the apartments, but we're really keeping an eye on that light rail area because we know we need another signal there. But maybe this is something that, you know, we can point out to our citizens in a newsletter and educate them about our roads. And I know we always have said that over and over again, and the pop ticket is always potholes. But I know from living in this city for so long and looking at our weather, you know, potholes happen. They're happening right now on I-5. I was shocked to see a whole bunch of those a couple months ago. And I know we did have another issue brought up about somebody getting hurt on the roads. And I can tell you, as a kid, I've got scars from the overlays and the seal seals, but, you know, it's something that I think our city has always tried to put an emphasis on our, our keeping good roads. But I just want our citizens to know that. And we do look at those comments and we do try and get money from other areas and especially safe routes to school. But, so that's my plea is just to keep an eye out for roads and repairs due to light rail coming in.
Yeah. Just a couple of comments I'd make, and I appreciate your thoughts, and that kind of helps me get a better idea of, and understanding of kind of the, some of the concerns and priorities that you and concerns and priorities that you and the council member, other council members may have. So, you know, the, with the tip, and we have kind of a lot of projects, we have kind of just an anticipated year that we're, that they're looking for construction. That's really kind of a very broad look. But what I'd say is, that doesn't, projects that are farther out, it doesn't mean that we, we can't look for funding sooner than that, right? If we, this is really just a guess on how, how things might play out and how, where we might see funding. But if funding opportunities match up, align with certain projects earlier than kind of what we anticipate, those projects, or if we feel like, hey, we want to move those projects up closer, you know, because this is updated every year, it can reflect kind of our change in priorities. So as, as, you know, we start feeling some of the impacts of light rail and some of those, some of the priorities that we had previously, those may shift. And so certain projects may move up in some years and some projects may move back depending on those shifting priorities. So that's the, one of the nice things about kind of having to update the tip annually is it can kind of reflect a kind of a little bit more, with a little bit more foresight each year into kind of what's coming towards us, right? So, so that would be one thing I would say about that. When we look at kind of the restriping project, yes, you know, looking at one lane each direction with the center left turn lane, we're also looking at adding bike lanes with, on that project. So one of the things we want to do is also want to make sure that we're increasing kind of our multimodal capacity. So having the, creating those options for folks who may not want to like necessarily drive to the, to the station, having an ability to take other modes of transportation such as bike to the, to the station, that's something that can help us. So as, as issues arise, if there's new safety issues or new capacity or operational issues that arise that we start to see with the station, once the station kind of gets up and running, we can easily kind of look to changing the tip and kind of reprioritizing some of those projects. I'd also say that, you know, we're looking to update the Transportation Master Plan this year. And so some of that, some of, there'll be a lot of thought that goes into, how does that, and how do the, how does the Transportation Master Plan look towards and anticipate some of those growth and operational changes that we'll see with the light rail station? So. And think, it's really a, it's a, it's a really flexible, the tip is a very flexible document and meant to kind of change with the changing needs of the city, so.
And I'm glad you brought up safety too, because we have our light rail though, but people are going to go down to Linwood to use that light rail too. And in the past, we've never used speed bumps or, what do they call them, hump bumps now or something?
Yeah, typically they're called speed humps.
Yeah. And I'm hoping maybe if we have to utilize those, we may have to utilize those. I know other cities do, but in the past, we never have because of our fire engines and different things like that. So you can notice in our city, we don't have those. But I'm just thinking that, I'm glad you brought that up, and you seem very aware of what's going on. So I really appreciate your report.
And then I'll just a quick, yeah, on traffic calming, that is something I definitely have a lot of experience with. I kind of started City of Shoreline's traffic calming program. I worked City of Seattle's traffic calming program, managed that for several years. So you brought up a good point, which is when you're looking at a program like that, kind of working in close, closely with the fire department in particular, so that we're, you know, we can be at a bit of odds, at a bit odds in our, kind of our goals. You know, the fire department typically is looking to get to locations as fast as they can. And from a safety perspective, we like to try and make sure drivers are driving, you know, kind of as reasonably as, as we can expect. So, so there's a lot of give and take and kind of looking at expectations and looking at different types of devices so that we can both be successful in our goals, so.
And thank you, John. Welcome. It's nice to have you here tonight. And Jesse, always nice to have you as well. I appreciated the presentation and appreciate the questions and conversation that we already had, which kind of dovetailed into what my question was. Just, I think as we have new staff and are taking a look at this, you know, I don't have questions necessarily about this year's, and I think we've had some conversations about various projects that aren't necessarily captured on this list. And so would love to have some time over the course of the next year to, you know, revisit that conversation, give our community the opportunity to provide additional feedback. And then I would love to hear your thoughts around kind of some sort of prioritization matrix or some, how are, because, you know, there's lots of projects here, and I think we would love to do all of them. And, you know, we have to prioritize, and so it would be really helpful to hear some guidance around what, how we might be able to do that maybe in a more systematic and equitable way. And so I would love to have that conversation in the coming year as well and get some thoughts and feedback from both of you on that.
Yeah, I'm actually looking forward to this. You know, like I said, I still feel like I'm getting my feet on the ground here. I see the, a number of the projects I see on the, on the list, I think are great project, particularly when we're talking about, you know, safety around schools. But as I learn the city more and as we get into the updating the Transportation Master Plan, I think the two will start working a little bit together. We're going to start looking at focusing in on priorities and kind of what's, what we're anticipating coming in for the coming years as far as impacts, whether that's through growth and through the, with the completion of the light rail station. And looking at kind of, starting to refocus as to what are going to, what those priorities are. But yeah, kind of having a broader discussion and getting some additional input from the council and from the community on what are important, what, what types of projects and what things are important for them to, so that we can include that in the next update, which this update is actually coming kind of at a late stage. Normally, we would be doing this in September. So while we're doing the 2024 update now, we'll probably be looking, before the end of the year, we'll be doing the 2025 update. So it'll be, it'll come faster even than, than I imagined.
Wonderful. Well, thank you and welcome.
So with the TNP and the PCI program that we just ran on the roads, we're anticipating most of these projects changing either in scale or in timing on when they go. We're going to try to use a data-driven approach to this and are happy to get input from council and the community as well to move forward.
Thanks, Jesse.
Okay, Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. Look at us, building off of each other on that same lane, brrumpump. I wanted to give you some concretes though, because we've actually had residents come and talk specifically about what they would call dangerous situations. And you may have heard them, but I want to make sure that in this context, in this conversation, and the idea of getting these things onto this plan, which is still foreign to me, and this is year five, how you get things on this. The first one I would point out is very close by, so 66th, right now, if you go north, yay, we got that new construction going on. You go south, before you get to, I guess that would be 236th, there's a slalom, I think is how you would say that. The residents have come and made it very clear how dangerous and how scary it is for their families, for their friends. We've actually had our police department go out and do studies. So we do have some traffic calming in place, but the problem still persists, and I want to make sure that they know that we know that's the case and we haven't forgotten that. The other one, if we pull back to 236th and now technically, I guess it would be 230th. So if you cross over 230, or if you're on 230th, cross over 236 and go down what used to be called Kmart Hill, which still means nothing to me, but has a lot of meaning here. But no, that, that area, that's been identified. There's this interesting, I wouldn't call it a hairpin turn, but I wouldn't just call it a regular turn, and the folks who live there would call it a cliff. So it's, meaning that they just hear people, you know, risking their lives all the time. I bring that one back to play mostly because this time of years when ice should be forming, we'd be hearing a lot more. But just to remind us that that street is getting a little bit more traffic. That stated with 66th right now having that construction, you theoretically, if you want to get over to 99, would use that hill to avoid 220th. I get lost in a paper bag for the, to be honest here, so I'm like, I might be off on my numbers. But point remains, that traffic is starting to be directed that way, if you will. And it's just one of those where, again, I don't want us to, when something does go wrong, to act like we didn't know that, and that that wasn't something that at least we would let you know, to look at again. Because again, those residents have come and have made that comment clear, but it's not like we can make the turn different. But you being a traffic calming person, perhaps you revisiting that might be in our interest. That said, I have been there myself and watched people just spin out, usually in the big, I'm a man, I want to drive this truck, truck, and see the look on their face when they realize they almost lost everything. And then think, when you pull that back, somebody who's not a skilled driver, you just go, wow, that's a turn we should probably have been addressing a long time ago. So I'll just use those two examples, but I'm sure when you ring the bell of, hey, what's going on, you hear a lot more, and you'll be like, it's only four square miles, how could there be this many problems, people? So to that point, I do want to recognize prioritization matters, but I would hope that we don't go with biggest bang, because sometimes those smaller ones really make the bigger impact, if you will. So that would be my last comment.
Thanks for that. Just on a, on a side note, while I am, I'm very familiar with the 66th South and South, met with the, I've already met with some of the residents out there to talk about kind of their concerns and kind of watch. I know the two primary concerns are speed and also large trucks, right? And I'll be doing speed studies on that this month, actually, when we, we met, I think it was early January. And that was one of the things I'd mentioned was like, you know, speed studies aren't great to do in January because you're still kind of recovering from some of the holiday times. So I wanted to wait till February when volumes start probably back to a little bit back more to normal. So, yeah, so I'm working closely with them. I'm not as familiar with the concerns on 230, so I'm glad you brought that up, so I'll start taking a look at that.
Yeah. And for the record, does it take a different name? Yeah, I was going to say, I think that it crosses over, technically becomes 228. That's giving you the point. It goes 230 to 228 in a moment like that.
And I believe 226 within a matter of four blocks.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So the history lesson, where Ranch 99 is right now, used to be Kmart.
To be fair, you've all told me this a thousand times, that's still just, it's nothing to me. But I knew, I do know there was a Kmart down there. I think this is the first time you've actually all told me where it was, but still means nothing to me.
Mayor, that you brought that up, 230th in 2010, I don't know how many millions of dollars we paid to have that all redone. And that was, you know, right where you were talking about where it goes over. So the city's done quite a bit, but Kmart Hill, it's bad. So I'm glad you brought that up.
So for that particular stretch of road, we are looking at potentially taking the West Side Water Main Phase Two up that hill. There's a stretch of pipe that we need to catch there, and the road itself is starting to alligator, that's when it kind of gets the holes in it. So it's possible that at that time, we can go and take a look at what we can do to perform traffic calming, which I believe John has the expertise to do, so.
Thank you both.
Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Welcome. Thank you. Great job. Appreciate the insight and update as to where we are currently with our tip. And I really appreciate the conversation we're having, and particularly want to emphasize the need for us to have the prioritization discussion. I mean, for instance, you know, sidewalks is a need throughout the city. Why did 214th Street sidewalks get on the list while there's, you know, probably hundreds of other sidewalks that also need? So how do we go about prioritizing? How do we, how do we go about identifying which projects we want to put on this year's tip program versus, you know, six years out? Along those lines, how do we, Dale's going to come and share with us the pedestrian bridge that is not on this list, but how do we, how do we go about getting it on the list, starting to look at that as an option and considering that for, you know, first of all, just getting it on the list, which allows us to, the opportunity to go out and look for funding in, through other areas. Along those lines, funding through other areas, want to emphasize the need. I've mentioned it to council and to the city manager several times, but federal funding comes with certain areas of emphasis or focus. And the key for us to be successful is going to be safety, equity, and climate. How do all of our projects address each of those subject areas? The more we figure out how, how our projects, whatever the project is, and how it affects the climate or improves the climate situation, how it, you know, how does it help improve our safety? And how does it provide or ensure, help ensure more equitable approach to helping our citizens? That's going to help move our projects up the scale and give us better opportunity to be able to fund our projects. So at any rate, I look forward to hearing more about, having further discussion about prioritizing how we get lists on, how we get things on the list, like the pedestrian bridge, how do we go about prioritizing the funding? And how do we ensure that we are addressing those key, key areas of safety, equity, and climate to ensure a better opportunity to get additional funding to our area? But anyway, thank you again. Welcome. Looking forward to working with you on all of that.
Thanks very much. Oh, and I'll just say, you know, as far as, how do we get projects onto the tip? It's really our discretion. So it really, it boils down to, you know, working with the council, working with communities, looking at kind of our transportation needs and kind of, you know, it's, to get it onto the project, it just, it's just, into the program, it's, it's just kind of having that prioritized conversation that we're talking about. So as we proceed throughout the year and have those conversations, you know, it's, things can drop off, things can be added. Most of the stuff that, most of the projects that you see on there are on there right now because they were on there last year. So, yeah, we just need to re, we kind of need to revamp and re-up that, that conversation of are these still our priorities?
Very good. Love work to it. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor, if I may, just to kind of add some meat to that, is Deputy City Manager, Public Works Director, and I are looking at that prioritization lens as part of your capital improvement program discussion for the upcoming comp plan. You will see that as part of your retreat.
Okay.
So that, that will facilitate that conversation and help us prioritize. We present you something that meets your, your vision.
Right. Thank you. Councilmember Payne Donovan, and then Ryan.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yes, John, really pleased to see you join the city and noted, noted your experience when, when the, the good news came that you had been hired. So, you know, I think for, for the purposes of the tip, you know, in front of us and, you know, makes, makes sense. And I think a lot of my concerns or sort of discussion have already been addressed here, but, you know, I'll, so I'll limit some of my comments, but I'm really curious about how we, you know, because I saw the, the small projects noted there, and as we're talking about traffic calming, you know, thinking about even lower cost ways to, to address, you know, what I think we were expressing up here and here from, from our neighbors and residents around town, there's, the need is great. And, you know, there's, there's plenty of, you know, whether it's, you know, streets that, that, you know, aren't pedestrian friendly or have dangerous elements to them, and combined with what I think, you know, locally and nationally are sort of more and more dangerous driving trends, whether it's distraction or vehicle size and mass or, you know, just speed and distraction. We, I think there is a real need for, you know, safer streets and to do it at an affordable scale. And so I'd be really interested in your thoughts moving forward. And I know we're headed to, towards a new TNP and, you know, some other, you know, important conversations in the comp plan update, but want to, want to see how we can be more tactical in it. And Jesse, I know this would probably, you have a lot of public works skin in the game, looking at problem intersections. And I know, you know, it's, I really appreciate the data-driven approach that you're, you're endeavoring on right now. But as we get complaints, you know, are we, are we collecting those in a way that we can identify sort of hotspots? You know, I think we, we've seen, or, you know, I hear from, from residents and see in the paper, you know, bad accidents due to speed on like 44th. Really pleased to, to see the conversation in this, this plan, or this plan address sort of, sort of areas where we have a lot of density of, of schools. And we're, we're seeing growth on all our borders and in town. And I'm, I'm reminded of, you know, for those of us who are down in Olympia, the Association of Washington City's Legislative Days this last week, had a chance to, to discuss with our, our neighbors, I think, you know, a chance to discuss with our neighbors, I think, you know, on all four sides of us, but especially some conversations with our neighbors to the north in Linwood about, you know, coordination, you know, at our border for projects and planning. As we know, as was mentioned, that a lot of Mount Lake Terrace residents are going to be a lot closer to the Linwood station. So, you know, you've hinted at this already, but I really look forward to working on sort of this more tactical, lower-cost, you know, type of calming that, you know, is really needed, I think, at this point. Because we, you know, we all know that whether it's 226th, or, you know, any other project in town, there's, there's been plenty of complaints about those for decades. And so it'd be really nice to, you know, it's more than nice, it'd be, it's really important that we address these things, you know, in increments we're able to, given that we've got a $10,000 sort of line item on the traffic calming program. Let's think about how we can use that judiciously while we, you know, seek out other bigger, bigger needs as well. So glad you're on board, and thank you for the good work here.
Yeah, thank you. One thing I'd say on that is, you know, in particular, kind of with those concerns of, you know, safety on streets, particularly the neighborhood streets, is, you know, kind of having a good data set. And that's one of the things I'd really like to kind of start focusing on, is collecting more data throughout the city, particularly on our neighborhood streets, maybe not necessarily the arterials. Well, the arterials, we already, we tend to do already. But I don't know if we've got much of a database of traffic speeds on the non-artorial streets. And so, we do have four counters, but I'm really set to kind of start deploying those a lot more frequently and trying to build up some of that database. And then with that, we can start overlaying that with the collision history that we get, that we can obtain from the state, looking at where pedestrians are walking, and trying to start doing an overlay of all those to kind of figure out where the hotspots are, where the needs are. So that's kind of the approach that I think we'll be looking to take. And then kind of implementing some of those lower-cost solutions for improving and enhancing safety on neighborhood streets. So yeah, that's something I'm looking forward to as I continue here with the city.
All right. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I see a lot of stuff on there we all are really interested in. And I understand that it's more of a general forecast of what we're going to plan for in the future. So I think most of my questions are going to be answered when we get to the Transportation Master Plan and we get down to the nitty-gritty. Then we could really put our two cents in. So my question, though, is, with this Transportation Improvement Program, I'm assuming that budget-wise, this fits in with our budget with the city in our six-year forecast?
So for the budget, you'll, if you, when you look at that Exhibit A, you'll see most of the projects, most of the projects that are listed on that, particularly the ones that are 26, funding is still to be determined. So a lot of that is, they're kind of budget-neutral. So we say, if you look up in the expended, or in the revenues, it says to be determined, and then the cost. So really, it's our ability to kind of have those on there and then start seeking and kind of developing a funding strategy, more than saying, hey, we know how we're going to fund this in 2028, and we've got the dollars, we know we have the dollars in 2028. We don't, that's part of getting it on the tip, is the ability to kind of then go seek funding for that. So.
Great. Yeah, because I know you're, we're going to nitpick on this list. It's kind of a wish list, and then seek grants as we're going. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands going up. So maybe we can open the public hearing. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Public hearing is now open. Do we have any written comments or anyone wanting to talk? City Clerk?
There were no written comments submitted and no one pre-registered online, but we do have Dale Jeremiah in the audience. You'll have five minutes to speak, and if you'll state your name and city of residence, please.
Thank you, Dale Jeremiah, Mount Lake Terrace. Thank you, Mayor Wright, fellow council members. So I wanted to speak first about, this is on page five of the memo, about the bicycle network improvements. And we're a little handicapped through no one's fault of working off a 2020 Transportation Master Plan map, because it doesn't show that my proposed pedestrian bicycle bridge is, was from 53rd to 50th. It's only 800 feet long over a three-foot creek. So, and this was previously discussed in the 2015 Master Plan about a formal crossing of Lion Creek. So when I read this about traffic calming program, what better to calm the traffic than to bidle the pedestrian bicycle bridge? So the next thing I wanted to talk about was our Transportation Benefit District, where we're getting $312,000 a year, and that's from the $20 car tabs that we pay. So two nights ago, the voters in Marysville reauthorized their two tenths of 1% sales tax for their Transportation Benefit District. And so in 2022, from the sales tax and the investment income, they had $4 million. So what I'd really like to see is somewhere between now and the 1st of August, is to tweak our Transportation Master Plan map to include this bridge, put it on the ballot for one cent, one tenth of a cent to fund this bridge. And it was approved, so the voters will approve it. If they do, great. What's that going to do to grant funding? We can say, hey, the voters approved this. I saw in the past where Edmonds had a ballot measure for the Benefit District for sidewalks and bikeways, but it failed. But the fact is, somewhere legally, they must have been able to say, yeah, we're not going to talk about cars, we're talking about, you know, transportation. So, and I think August, first week of August is when the city has to submit ballot measures to the county to be on the November ballot. So, you know, it'd take a little bit of work, but we could do it. And last week, I heard a lot of discussion about what's our identity, we want economic development. This is it. This is the bridge. It's going to be a suspension bridge. When you hear about the Brooklyn Bridge, the Golden Gate Bridge, the Sydney Harbor Bridge, you're going to also talk about the Mount Lake Terrace Bridge. So thank you.
All right. I assume that was the only person. So Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Public hearing is now closed. All right. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to adopt the 2024 to 2029 Transportation Improvement Program ordinance.
It's been moved and seconded. We'll just go on to vote?
Is there any discussion?
Does anyone have any discussion? I don't see any, so we'll just go on and call for a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Okay. Next is the presentation of the city website redesign with our communications manager, Ricky Frashante, and our city manager. You're going to be part of this, too?
I am, Mayor, but we'll have Ricky do the presentation. She's done a great job on the website update so far, and I can't wait to see it live.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I'm excited to share with you updates on the city website. Before we do the big reveal, I'd like to walk you through a little bit of background about how we got to where we are tonight. So first of all, the city website was last significantly redesigned in 2019. And as you know, in the internet world, five years is an eternity. That is a long time. And in those five years, not only has the city changed a lot, if you look around, you can see some of that change, but also the basic standards and also best practices for accessibility have evolved. And we were in 2019, there were, where was already baked in. And then also, mobile users are more and more. And I've been watching the data now for two and a half years about, and it often had been a wash between mobile and desktop users. And for all of 2023, we were at 57% mobile. So that tells us it has to function on a cell phone. And that's also an equity issue, too, if not everybody has a desktop computer. Lastly, I wanted to point out that it was important to us that this process be driven by data, because everybody has their special important projects that they want on the homepage. Every department has it, every community member has it. But the data shows us what they're looking for, what they're clicking on, and what they're searching. And when I saw that far and above and beyond, one of the things they're searching for is passports, that tells me passports should be on the homepage. And there are things that have to be on there because it's the right thing to do, but there also are things where the most popular topic is swim, is the pool and swim lessons. It should be on the homepage. So that is the background. Lastly, you'll remember I was here before you in March, and we talked about all the city's communication channels, including the website, that larger conversation about the communication plan. We've been working really hard on that. It's a lot of work, but we'll hopefully be bringing that to you in the months ahead. But going back to that, one of the important pieces of feedback that we heard from council was the Google Translate button on the website. So what I'm going to show you doesn't show that yet, and it's a technical coding issue they explained to me, but they didn't want to move the bottom-right button, because they said a lot of folks in those communities, that's where they know to look for the Translate button. But that was one of our big asks, was to get another Google Translate button right up top. And one of the places we looked for for that was Verdant. And also, we wanted the search bar to be bigger and easier to find. Lastly, I should note that Civic Plus has been our vendor, at least since 2019. This isn't a super bespoke, we have a personal designer process. It's pretty modular, it's pretty templated, but our committee was able to work with them. And I want to make sure that I think all seven people who served on that committee from multiple departments that provided insight from their specialties, that one person sitting around would not think of, and how they interact with customers. All right. One moment, please. One extra moment, please. Madam Clerk, may I have some assistance? Nope, I got it. And I have to warn you that what you're about to see is going to look tiny. That's just an artifact of the design process. But if you have any questions, I'll be happy to clarify. One moment, please, and then I'll be happy to sort of walk you through the skeleton of what we're looking at. I'm going to do it. There we go. All right. So I'm going to walk you through from the top. Thank you for your patience there. So the alert bar at the top right now is for a construction project. That's something that, you know, comes and goes based on need. Okay, it shows my cursor. So that mega menu at the top is things that we know that people are looking for, and that's a navigation menu. Some people, that's how they go, is they look at the menu by category. We've done a lot of work to simplify this and try to make it logical and simple, and not just try to stuff everything everywhere. Because the way my brain works is if I open it up and there's 30 options, I just shut down and I'm going to go search. So then you see a big banner photo. This looks funny because of the Zoom, but these are basically six to eight pictures. We try to change out quarterly or so to reflect our city and what we're really excited to show people. Next, you see the buttons. You'll notice city council button there, passports, permits, swimming pool, utility billing, and careers. And most of this is driven by the data. This is what people are coming to our site, this is what to look for, this is what they want. I don't have hover capability here, but contrast was important to us. So when you're on your desktop and you hover, you'll notice a hover produces a strong contrast. The next section here is, and I forget the type of tree here, but we pulled Ken Court Mansion, what kinds of trees would be appropriate. But you see the tree pattern here. The next is what I call the tiles. And this is where we have a lot more flexibility and control of what are the, this is what we know people want in the buttons. The tiles are what do we want them to see? Where do we want to drive them? What's helpful, or maybe what's more timely than, or seasonal that we don't want in those buttons year-round? What you are seeing here are just placeholders, because we know, we have a sense in our minds what we want there. And also, by having these be simpler, they're easier to change out. And I'll keep going. The, let me just check my list real quick. The next section you're going to see is news. So this is mainly where news releases are going to go. This is simplified. Before, if you look at it right now, there's sort of three columns. To me, those two of those columns are redundant. This makes it so that there's one section for news, and that we have the capability of, it can be chronological, or we can make a subjective call of, we want this road project to be at the top, or this is something we want people to see right now. And this is really good for events, things that are important and happening, but not so much breaking news urgency. The pattern you see is meant to evoke ambiguity between water and mountains. The current web, the previous website had a, was sort of based on a Mount Rainier pattern that we didn't feel really spoke to our sense of place as a community. Lastly, this is, might be my favorite part, but the footer. Before, the footer was kind of stuffed full of all these things that we thought people might be looking for. And this idea came from the committee, organically, people that don't do this for a living, and that's really what they said they wanted, was the addresses, the hours, the phone number, and how to contact our three facilities that are open to the public. So to me, I look at this, and it's simple, it's clean. By the time, we wanted to reduce the scroll depth, which I think is where the internet is going. But by the time someone's got down there, they're more likely to just go search. One last thing I wanted to note is you may notice that we are removing the homepage calendar. It was super cumbersome, it required a lot of duplicative effort by staff, and it was requiring doing the same, putting in the same information in three or four places, and we just weren't seeing the return on investment. If you saw an event there and you clicked on it, we couldn't control that module, and it, to me, it wasn't providing that service to the customer. I don't want them to click somewhere and then they have to click two more times if we promised that on the front end. And then one last note I wanted to make is this isn't the end of the road. So what, right now, with the project, we are on track to launch March 26, late morning. We'll be sure to keep you updated on that. I personally want to make sure the launch is up and working before we announce it, and I think we'll, I think people will be excited to hear that news. And then lastly, the redesign really only looks at the aesthetics and flow of the homepage. And it shows the basic of what the shell of what interior pages look like. Each department is responsible for their own webpages and their own content. And one of the steps down the road is to help those departments and produce templates where there's less variance in what are all our different pages look like. So it's, ideally would be more professional, more streamlined, but still give them flexibility, because we have such a wide variety of topics. because we have such a wide variety of topics that we're covering, and what's going to work for dance may not work for planning. And at this point, I'd like to open it up to questions. Thank you so much.
All right. Councilmember Payne Donovan, and then Sonmore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ricky, great presentation. I really appreciate the, you won reminding me that I need to renew my passport, so just add that tally. But really appreciate the thought that's gone into this whole process, you and the staff effort here. Glad to see your focus both on making sure that staff time is well-used, and that residents and, you know, folks who are searching for things in Mount Lake Terrace have an efficient, easy way to find things. I know, I can see this working both on our mobile devices and on regular web browsers. So really just kudos on the thought and intentionality here. You know, I know you do a lot of other great communications and outreach work for the city, so really, really pleased that you get to bring it full circle in improving our systems. I think, you know, I'll be curious to understand if, what feedback we do get. I know that change can be scary, and I think this makes terrific sense. So I appreciate you rolling in the feedback on the translation services, because I know that's an increasing, you know, from, an increasing need, and probably has been an unmet need for a long, long time. So I'm glad we're centering that experience as well. So I'll stop there, but realize that was mostly appreciation. But again, I, just to wrap that up, if we can in the future, like, get a sense for how, what sort of response you're getting, I'd be really curious about that in, you know, six months' time, or whenever is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll make sure to do that.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Thank you. Ricky, I just wanted to provide some feedback. And I had to look twice because that's Chip, one of my former coworkers, who was a fantastic engineer, and he entered our art show this year, so that made me smile. But what I like is when the photo doesn't take over the whole page and you're scrolling, or if you have a smaller screen. And studying people in my age generation, a lot of times, we don't scroll around the sides. And so having it focused in the middle, to me, is a better approach. And the simplicity of it, I really like, because I know at my work, we're doing a lot of interactive websites where you scroll up, but this stays here, and it, and it's just a little bit more than what, when I go to a website, I want to find what I want to find, easy, fast. And what you said about passports and pools, I mean, that's spot on. People want to know that information quick, but they don't want to have to scroll through everything to find. And we used to talk about, you know, how many hits to get, how many hits does it take to get to the center of, you know, what you're trying to find? And so I really appreciate the simplicity, but it's still elegant looking, and I think it's interactive for a lot of age groups. My two questions were, it says "your city," so I'm assuming that maybe that's where the state of the city address would go, the history, the budget, the departments, I'm not sure. And then just the other question about businesses. What is our policy on businesses? Because, you know, we have, and you might already have it on there, I know Brian's just bringing it up again for me. And I didn't know, it's not going to change, is that what you're showing me, Brian?
What's likely?
On there now.
In that link.
Oh, thank you very, very much. For businesses, is it just strictly businesses, or do we have like the Nile and American Allegion, and like the tennis group that just came in? Do we have a certain policy? I know years ago, there were certain policies, we couldn't advertise outside of the city or, and things like that. So I was just wondering, that was more of a curiosity question, and thank you, Brian, for showing me that.
Thank you so much. I want to make sure I address two of your questions. The "your city" header is really exciting for me, because we sat around and kicked around ideas, and we looked at a lot of city websites. I never thought I would spend so much time on Paso Robles and Alamo Gordon, those were two of our favorites. But we saw a lot that said government, and we're like, what does that mean? We saw a lot that said services. What does that mean? Or departments? And to me, when I go and I look at services and I see something that my, the average person isn't going to connect with the service they receive, the average person isn't going to go look for the operations facility to figure out their road project. So for us, that was like your city, your boards and commissions, your council, and your departments. And that was the logic behind that. And I wish it was my idea, but it wasn't, it actually came from utility billing. And then lastly, to get to your next question about partnerships, that is a huge conversation that we've been having, and that falls under the social media sharing policy that I believe is going to be coming to you for first review next week.
That item has been moved, but it will be coming to you shortly, along with a few other policies that I've spoken to council about before, that I think we are important, that we need to address prior to the overall policy manual.
But to go back to that, the industry standard is that the chambers oversee the business directory. So our anticipation is that that is something that they could explore taking on. The previous business directory was not active, it was not updated, and most communities that I asked about, they leave that up to the chambers. But for now, the website, its focus is really on city services and city programs that we know people are coming to us for.
Ricky, one follow-up question. I know in the past, we've had people want to see our home businesses, too. Is that something that would be something we would bring to that committee to show them all our home businesses, too? So it would be kind of encompassing every type of business?
Do you mean home occupations? We can, we can share that feedback with the chamber. And I know that we have that data. Thank you.
Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. Firstly, wonderful presentation. Thank you very much for your time and energy. Second, I really like how you started it off, talking about how five years, and how much change and amazing and all that good stuff, mostly out of self-service, because this conversation was my first conversation five years ago this week, which is implying I'm that five-year difference. Thirdly, and more importantly, you mentioned Verdant, which I presumed you meant their actual website, so I jumped to their website, and specifically about the language. And what I noticed, and I'm going to date myself here, I don't know what you call that, but when you're on their website, their website actually scrolls underneath the language, so you can change the language at any time. And it made me think of like Excel, where you can always see column one, and you can scroll all the way out, if that tracks. And so if you haven't jumped on Verdant's page, I encourage you to do so in this moment. Because, where I'm going with that is I didn't quite understand what we were settling on. It sounded like we will be at the bottom, because that's traditionally where folks who use it are used to seeing it. But I thought I heard you say you were advocating for the Verdant model, and I'm really just seeking clarification.
Thank you. And first off, congratulations on five years. So Verdant, we looked at everybody's website, and unfortunately, Verdant is on a different platform, so we asked, can we just copy this? And they said no. The other thing I want to mention is what you're talking about, I can't think of the right language, but it's almost like you freeze the panes or it hovers. And under our redesign package, we were allowed one element that could hover, and there was back and forth, but ultimately, we settled on the mega menu, is that's the one element that stays put. But the button that we liked was the City of Everett's, so we haven't seen ours yet, because once they put it in the backend, it will change the code on the homepage, and they have to do it all as one fell swoop, because all of this change isn't live. That's how they explained it to me. But our request was to have to have two Google Translate buttons, because when we asked for the top one, they had concerns about duplication because of the fact that they say those communities are used to looking in that one spot, but we said that we would prefer the duplication. Because if, if you don't do this all the time, it's right at the top.
Wonderful, thank you. Just wanted the clarification, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ricky, both for the presentation and all of the work, and grateful for your approach and focus on, you know, accessibility and equity and working cross-functionally, and I think all of the wonderful things that you talked about in terms of this project. I did have a couple of questions. One, I guess, in terms of community feedback, it sounds like we've had a really good, like, staff contribution process that has gotten to us to, you know, a new website design that I love that it's data-driven and focused on, you know, what is most needed from our community, and that everybody had the opportunity, from a staff perspective, to share input. I'm curious if we have any community input opportunities planned.
Well, the fun thing about being public-facing, as we hear it all the time, and that anecdotal evidence really builds, and each department hears it in a different way. So if someone's looking for a permit, that's going to be a different feedback. So I think people have been eager and often with that feedback, and the nice thing is I've been here for long enough to see the trends and see the commonalities. So we, hopefully, that reflects that. And I'm sure we'll hear more feedback and we'll incorporate that, because there are elements that we can control and change, and then there's elements that are baked in. And then some of it also is just the technical skill of what we have in-house versus out. But we would always be open to making those changes.
Great. And I would imagine we probably are tracking data around like clicks and stuff close enough that if we were to make, once this goes live, if there was a significant falloff in an area that normally we have really good traffic, we would take a look at that in a fairly timely way to see if there was something about that redesign that is impacting folks' ability to navigate to that in the same way that they were previously, correct?
Yeah, that is an excellent idea. I know that you receive the quarterly reports that I've been trying to do consistently, but I should take a big screenshot of the month before, so we can compare it.
I think that would be phenomenal. And then I guess the only other thing, and I recognize you said that it'll be very small here, and I will also own that my team knows at this point, I'm always, they're like, is it big enough when we're on Zoom? I was like, I don't know if it is. So I guess from a readability perspective, and I think this goes into kind of that user experience as well, like, I guess the font seems like, when we're looking at it on the screen, like, very small and harder to read, but perhaps, there, and maybe that, I was going to say, maybe, maybe that will solve that. So is, I guess, was that a size decision, or was that a limitation? Or, I guess I'm just curious, that piece, as far as like the font and the, just readability from a size perspective.
So for this screen grab, I had to zoom way out so I could capture the whole thing. It wouldn't let me PDF. So I had to capture, so you could see the whole thing stem to stern. But I'm one of those, like, 150% Zoom people, like, when people come to my cubicle, they can read my screen from outside my cubicle, and it met my standards. A lot of these size things are all standardized by Civic Plus, because they have to meet all those standards, and they don't want any of their clients taking steps that don't. But going back to that, is some of the preset modules, like that calendar module that we were relying on, that has text sizes we can't change, that was one of the complaints, was it's too tiny. And not everybody is, you know, has their Control+ memorized. The other nice thing is that we tried it on a bunch of different monitor sizes. So I think in real life, the font sizes will be good. If your experience is something different, then we need to hear that.
Okay, that's great. Well, I really appreciate all of the work, Ricky, and appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see anyone else with their hands up. So. Oh, there's, there's more to this, isn't there?
No, but I would just love to say that Ricky's comment about people being eager and open to share feedback with us is something, is one of the best things I have ever heard, and will be stealing it.
Oh, and just on that note, too, is it was Lan's idea that we added a "give feedback" under "how do I?" And people have used that. And the first one we got was about Island County Corrections, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Maybe you covered it. When does this go live?
March 26 late morning.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, onward on to City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, several things to mention tonight. First, I wanted to remind everybody that Monday is a holiday, it's President's Day holidays, or City Hall will be closed, in observance of that holiday, and we'll be back on Tuesday of next week. Secondly, a couple of items that were mentioned in the public hearing earlier this evening. 66th Street, construction is well underway. They started actually Tuesday morning, I believe, with surveying and doing some of that preliminary work. Today, they started saw cutting. So we're actually digging into the ground and getting that project done, and we're all excited about that. The Safe Routes to School project at 216th and 48th should go out to bid in mid-March, and the goal with that project is to have it done over the summer, before the school year starts, so there won't be any impact to students as they begin to hopefully use that as a safer route to school. Second to last, the Raze Grant was also mentioned tonight, I know that's very important. Carolyn and her team have been working incredibly hard on that, to get that done, ready for submittal, and we are anticipating submitting that grant to USDOT next Tuesday, so the day after we get back from the holiday. So that's, that's great news, we'll be in well, well in front of the deadline. The last thing I wanted to mention is sad, but kind of, it's also a happy item, too. Ken Courtmanch is, has notified us that he will be retiring, and his last day with the city will be on May 3. So I wanted to recognize Ken in particular for 38 years of service to the city. It's an amazing career run, and we're all very happy for him, but we're also incredibly sad that he's going to leave. I know I've been here just slightly less than a year now, and he has been invaluable to me and to the rest of the team, getting us up to date, or up to speed on things that have happened here and will continue to happen in the future. Ken started in 1986, part-time, and full-time hire date was in 1989. I can't even remember what I was doing in 1989, certainly not something as important as the work that he's been doing. So very happy for him, but going to be sorry to see him leave. We have a couple of celebrations planned for him. You have a regular meeting on May 2, and we're definitely going to invite Ken to that and celebrate his service to the city and our community. And on April 20 is the volunteer appreciation event, and I'll be sending you more details on that event. And Ken will be leading that, and it's his last public event, and we're going to have a good time and celebrate him. So wanted to let you know about that. That's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Sonmore.
In our reports, if you could add retirement, is Kevin Smith also retiring from parking wreck? Because he hired on about 1980, or even before, right about then?
He is not retired, and we don't want to push him out, for sure.
Oh, I, yeah.
No, no, not at all.
No, I thought I heard that along the way, and
I don't believe so.
Not wanting to push him out, but I heard that there's several long-term employees getting ready to retire. There's also another one, and so, oh, yeah, we would
There are several. Ken told me he had been here 38 years, and Kevin, I think, mentioned he'd been here almost 46. And both of those numbers stunned me, but I could not believe that somebody beat Ken's number, so, there you go.
And I can't fathom, I remember, you know, I see Hillary's name, and I'm always so impressed that, you know, we have an attorney at our fingertips here to have all that knowledge. And when Greg retired, you know, after all those years, and then Will Van Ry retired, and then Virginia left, it's just kind of the passing of the torch, and to hear Ken is retiring, especially being on the parking wreck, it's, it's, I don't even know what word to use, other than heart-wrenching, so, thanks for letting us know.
Yeah. And we And we will, whenever a long-term employee retires, I will definitely mention that to you. Thankfully, we haven't had many. And unfortunately, we're losing Ken, but I am happy for him. That's definitely well-earned.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And as a newly-minted 38-year-old, I can't imagine all the things that Ken has seen here on service to our city and its parks. But, jokes aside, I had a very simple question. When might we expect to hear RACE Grant news? Is that late June? Am I recalling that correctly?
Believe the announcement for that is in late June. I can verify for you, but I'm pretty sure that's correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Salmore.
Just a quick follow-up. I think I remembered in one of the budget reports that we were gonna hire three people to start early. It was like $86,000. They were gonna start early, so they could start training with people who were gonna retire. And I'm assuming one of them was, I don't know how you get those 38 years packed away, but... So we do have somebody that's kind of been mentoring along the way.
That's the, that is the plan for Ken and a couple of other, a couple of other folks. You will see a presentation next week about our ideas for Ken's position. We don't believe that there is a single individual that we can replace Ken with. He's not replaceable. So we will have a presentation where we will request council's permission to split that into two. One facility supervisor and one park supervisor. And thank you for remembering that. That will help ease the discussion next week.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will save all of my sappy Ken stuff for when he is here, and I can say it to him and make him incredibly uncomfortable. But I did want to, I guess, just maybe ask if there is some way... So I think one of the things that Ken does really amazing, and there's lots, but he gives an amazing tour of our parks. And having been around so long, he knows the history of them and all of the details about them in a way that I found really impactful when I heard it. And I would love to be able to capture that in a way that others in our community could share in that, even once Ken is no longer with us. So I guess I would love to just put that out there as maybe an ask or an idea, as he is in these final months of being here at the city. I would love to figure out a way to capture that and be able to share it.
Yeah. We want to do, you've probably seen or heard about the Oral History Projects. And we want to do something like that specifically in the parks with, or for Ken. And for him, too, because he is incredibly proud, as he should be, of our park system.
My biggest worry after Ken actually retires is that he's the one that does all the Band-Aid work around the city and in the pavilion. And I know that the others all know how to do some of that. But sometimes it's Ken that gets it done. And I'm just worried that we're gonna have another, whatever might happen at the pavilion or wherever. And our whole staff of maybe 12 people are on their hands and knees trying to get it done. Would actually probably just make one phone call to Ken.
So two of the people that work with Ken in the Facilities Department, Barry and Floyd, have also been here a long time, know how to do a lot of those things. But that discussion was had at the Leadership Team Meeting earlier this week, and all made us a little bit apprehensive. But we will figure it out and make sure it works, as best we can.
All right. Do I see any more hands going up? Nope. Okay, so next, are you done with your report? Thank you so much. So next is the Council Liaison Reports. And I'm just gonna start over there with Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a part of my report, but I will begin with it nonetheless, which is I had the honor of being here on the 13th, when Ken gave his resignation, or his plans to retire. But nonetheless, just wanted to say, I am not ashamed to say that I had the opportunity to walk over, shake his hand, and cry. I think most of you may remember, I got my start on the library board, but I really leaned in when I moved over to RPAC. And as I said to Ken, he was one of those people who, if we as a council could actually be friends with the staff, he is the first one on my list. And there's a lot of really good staff in this building. So that's such a major loss, but again, just very happy for you. And we'll put all this again in front of you when you're here on the second before us. That said, and before I again move to my report, just wanted to say thank you, and I'm gonna say Mrs. Cannon, she references her dearly departed husband, but our historian, and she always gives us a letter. And I just want to be as clear as possible how much I treasure these letters. It's just such a sweet offer, and just thank you. So I just wanted to say that. We don't really get these types of feedback very often. And so when we do, and especially when it's something so meaningful, just wanted to acknowledge that. So thank you, and I'm sure the rest of the council will see something similar like that if they don't tell you in person. Now on to my actual report. Let's see if I can go through this as soon as quickly as possible, which is on the 3rd, which was a Saturday, I had the opportunity to participate in the You Are Not Alone Conference, which was around 988, which is just my way of saying, every chance I get to talk about 988 and its importance and its actual ability to save lives, I'm going to do that. So it was an honor to be in that space and see all of those service providers. The county put it on with a number of partners, but again, this comes back to 988. And if you don't know what that is, go ahead and Google it right now. On the 6th, I had the opportunity to participate with one of our partners, Economic Alliance of Snohomish County, on their coffee chats. And they gave the update on the transportation, Snohomish County Transportation, where we stand. And I am going to steal everybody's thunder, because all of us were on that call. And just want to let you know how exciting it was to see that we will go to the Storm Game this upcoming summer, if I understood correctly. We may see our light rail light up sooner than we give it credit. And on the drive home last night, we actually saw one of the trains in Shoreline, which just tells us that it's making its way up that line overnight. So if anybody sees it at night, do let us know, because that's gotta look really cool. Let's see, on the 7th and 8th, I was together with quite a few of you. We missed the two who were not able to join us at AWC. I'll leave that, because somebody else I'm sure will cover it, but that was a great experience. That night, though, of the 7th, I just want everyone to know, I was in Olympia, just in my hotel room with our Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group, who was knocking it out again. It was such a wonderful conversation about the city, where it's going, and the dreams of it, our student, our business community, everybody was really engaged. And just wanted to thank them for their time and energy, and also applaud our consultants, who moved the conversation along, I thought, very professionally. The 8th, when we got back from AWC, I did join a study session with the rest of you. On the 9th, that next morning, who, believe me, it was a long day, at 7:00 AM, I had the opportunity to join the Carl Gibson Senior Center. VOA runs that, but it was their first Rise and Shine fundraiser breakfast. And I bring that up because it's a senior center, and we, of course, has made some decisions about our senior center. And it was just this chance to see where we could be going. This room was full, and they did a wonderful job of raising money for the directly benefit the seniors in that community. And it was just this idea of just envisioning that that's gonna happen in Mount Lake Terrace sooner, rather than later. I kept the spirit going. And on the 10th, I participated in Edmund's Lunar New Year, just another wonderful gathering, and another opportunity to see grassroots efforts. This was only their third year, and as I said, we're inside now, which is a long story about how you have to sometimes start very humbly before you make it into the Edmund Center for the Arts. But they did a fascinating and incredible job, and thank you for sharing your culture with us. The 11th, I heard there was a football game or something like that. But I actually was with the Zora Club, helping them with their fundraiser. And I just say that because they had a council member serving as their bartender. I got to finally use my liquor license. It was pretty fun. And it's a great group. They tie back to the Shriners Club, but nonetheless, a long story. On the 12th, that Monday, I actually was invited to Linwood City Council's meeting, where, along with some colleagues that you have seen come before us here, Wally Webster and Donnie Griffin, and another colleague, Doug Rayford, the four of us were presented with their Black History Month proclamation. And so I just want to say thank you to our colleagues there. That was quite the honor, and appreciate that they were recognizing the collective work that we do, which is to say thank you again, Mount Lake Terrace, for honoring me with our Black History Month proclamation. And then, of course, Linwood, which is just my way of saying, since we got a Grammy winner, felt like I was in an ensemble. I think that's where you get the group award. And then I got one as a solo artist, so that was pretty fun. So I don't know if anyone else cares but me. I thought it was pretty cool, though. That said, the 13th, we had the public meeting, which I thought went really well. I don't know how many people were online, but it was very exciting to see where that progress is going with Evergreen of the Street there. Congratulations to the Edmunds School District. They learned that same night that their levy and bonds passed. So anybody who had anything to do with that, thank you very much. Then on the 14th, I already mentioned, was my fifth anniversary with the city. So thank you to the city of Mount Lake Terrace for this trust and this honor. And then, just today, again, in the spirit of just seeing how things are growing, I had the opportunity to talk with the Greater Marysville-Tulalip Chamber of Commerce, talking about services, in this case, that VOA provides. But I bring that up, again, to point out that these are things that our chamber can do, tying back to EASC and that support that they're giving, and that the chamber wanting to grow, that these after-hours are great, but there's also these opportunities to bring resources and highlight resources that are already here. And that's one of those functions that the chambers can do, and I look forward to them being able to do that more consistently. And that will be the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Murray, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I was at the Association of Washington, I always get it wrong, Association of Washington Cities, down in Olympia. Had the chance to join most of our colleagues. We always have a really impressive showing for Mount Lake Terrace, and I think that says a lot about our commitment, both to going and learning, but also going and representing our community to our representatives down in Olympia. We had a chance to meet with several of them, despite the fact that it was an incredibly busy time for them. And so appreciated them taking some time out of their busy schedules to chat with us about our priorities here in Mount Lake Terrace and the things that we are hoping to partner and gain support from them on here this year and in coming years here. So it was a great opportunity, I think, outside of that. So in addition to meeting with our representatives down in Olympia, I think one of my favorite parts of these events is always the opportunity to connect with particularly our neighboring communities, but all of the communities and representatives of our councils across the state, to hear about what they're working on, what their challenges are, what has worked well for them, and share those things with one another and bring them back here to Mount Lake Terrace. So it was a good event, time well spent. Nice to spend time with my fellow council members here from Mount Lake Terrace as well. We had a chance to hear from several representatives. We got to hear from the governor. And I think one of my key takeaways from all of the things that we heard was just, I mean, around the fact that I think there is a certain amount, and we don't have this as much in Mount Lake Terrace, and I should probably circle back to that and Mrs. Cannon's letter. But I think oftentimes councils have, we hear loud voices. And the governor in particular commented about the fact that the five loud folks in the room don't necessarily represent the 95% of folks that we aren't seeing here in council chambers. And I just, I thought that that was a powerful and good reminder when we are having tough conversations, or at least conversations where we have at least a small vocal group of folks who are opposed, perhaps, or advocating for something. And so, but I will say, one of my favorite things about Mount Lake Terrace, especially in hearing things that are going on in other communities, is just, we really have amazing residents, and I am grateful time and time again. And I think Mrs. Cannon is a great example of the fact that we get really nice communications, and we get really thoughtful folks coming and giving public testimony. And it's just, I feel very, very grateful to live in the community that we do. And I'm reminded of that regularly when I get a chance to go and get outside of our community, I guess. Outside of that, we had our meeting last week. And I also was at the Multicultural Association of Edmunds Lunar New Year Celebration here in Edmunds over the weekend, and it was phenomenal. My kids and I headed down, and we got to see several performers. And it was just, it was a really good opportunity for community to come together. And I think to Councilmember Woodard's point about grassroots efforts, I'm always impressed and appreciative for community members who take their time to share, to build connection and community. And appreciated that we had that next door. And I look forward to more of those things in our community as well here, as we look forward. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Salmore, you're next.
Thank you. I was circling Doris's quote about her husband now in heaven. It makes me extremely sad to hear that. But Doris, of course, has been a wonderful support, especially of the city councils. So Doris, thank you for the letter. She used to do Christmas cards every year, and I used to be thrilled to receive one of those as well. But as you were saying, yes, another wonderful residence. I just would like to report out, I attended the Niles fundraiser that they had on February 10th. And I did ask if we could start having a liaison from the Nile come and give us an update on their events, because I've got three of them here. And I was just gonna tell you a little bit about them. They are gonna have Music on the Green on June 1st and July 6th. So I'll leave these up here. And it says, "Save the Date," but there is no time on it yet. So they're gonna have a music festival, and all ages are welcome. And then they'll have the annual Easter egg hunt that they've had for many years. And of course, it'll be Saturday, March 30th, starting at 10:30. Or it opens at 10:30 and starts at 11:00. And I can tell you, it will be done probably by 11:03. The kids, especially when we had it up on the playfield, I would bring my daughter to one and then to the other, and they would last like three minutes, because the kids would just go so fast to that candy. And it was a sight to see, and I just always appreciated those. And then they're having a Mardi Gras, and that is February 24th. And I think those are all for now, but they're having another fundraiser coming up, I think, in the next week or two. But just keeping in contact with them would be very important. Which also goes on, I had the privilege of meeting every two years when the Stryker Brigade changes commanders on JBLM. They have either a ceremony, or I've been just lucky enough to be invited. And they oversee about 5,000 troops. And one of the things I bring that up for, it was reminding me that Mount Lake Terrace was based, the housing was based on military. And it would be, oops, wrong ones. It would be lovely to see us also do something for the American Legion. When I had an event there last year, I attended a couple of their meetings and then got to know Mike up there. And their knowledge that we should be giving to our veterans in this community and the services they provide, I think, would be very beneficial. A lot of servicemen are coming home with a lot of different issues, like they have in the past, but this provides support. And so I'm hoping that we can do that. And that's one of the reasons, Ricky, I was asking you about what we can put on the website and what we can't. Then additionally, let's see, I wanted to let everybody know the Mount Lake Terrace basketball team, that Nayland coaches, is doing extremely well. We've had men's, or boys' basketball at Mount Lake Terrace High School for 64 years now. And so, go Nayland. I know it's always appreciated. In the past, council used to attend a lot of those basketball games. And then if you're interested, Mount Lake Terrace is going to be having their senior projects coming up. And I think you can sign up for two-hour blocks in there in the morning, and they believe they're coming up fairly quickly. But it's on personal finance, and if you've ever gone to a senior projects, they're pretty incredible. And additionally, Left Board, Left One Board was held February 13th. And I got to see the tail end of the Evergreen Parks presentation that evening. And then the Finance Committee, I know that we're going to have a meeting to meet up on a couple other things. So I'll give more of a report out on that. And then I was just going to tell you really quickly, if I can pull it up here real fast, just a report out from Park and Rec. They do have the swim schedule, and they will be changing it starting... They do have the swim schedule and they will be changing it starting February 12th. They have a new coordinator that started on February 26th. They're training lifeguards. They still have their dog training classes, the Dance Academy. The Spring Fitness is March 11th through May 24th. Then the Quarterly Dance is March 11th through the 24th. Pickleball, adult open gym, you can go to now, starting in March. And they'll be opening on Saturday afternoons for some drop-in pickup, pickleball games. And it's about $4.25 for a resident. And if you're a non-resident, it's $4.75. They're still offering racquetball. And they have some specialty classes, STEM classes, well-played kinetic classes, and some crafting workshops as well as some drawing classes. That's kind of new to me. And then I did see this in an email, too, Wally Ball Beginner Course. I'm not sure exactly. I've never played wally ball. But it's played, it's actually volleyball played in a racquetball court off the wall. And then, of course, softball leagues, Veterans Memorial Park, Upper Plateau Design will be held next, is it Tuesday? It's February 20th. And then Ballenger Park Viewing Platform, the Transit Connection. Design teamwork is diligently finalizing all the documents and secured final permits in preparation of the trail construction at Veterans Park. And then I left this to last because I know we just talked about the Nile offering music, too. But we'll have Terrace Summer Nights and the expansion of our summer offerings. So that will also include movies in the park and adding musical performances. So I don't know if these dates will connect with that or we can combine any of things. But I just wanted to give you a brief report out on that since we were talking so much about Ken. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, actually two weeks ago, the, no, last week, I was here for the work-study session. And then this week, on the 13th, I attended the Left One Retirement Board and also attended the Evergreen Playfield Public Group in these chambers. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, the past two-week period, have attended the AWC convening down in Olympia. I believe that was last Wednesday and Thursday. Really enjoyed the camaraderie and the discussion that Councilmember Murray highlighted. And I believe that wraps up my report, actually. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor for Tim Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, let's see, on the 6th, I had the Snohomish County Council Presidents and Mayors Pro Tem meeting where we talked about regional issues and potential opportunities for collaboration amongst the cities. On the 7th and 8th, had the AWC Action Days down in Olympia, followed by our work session that evening. On the 9th, had the Snohomish County Cities Executive Board meeting where we talked about upcoming meetings. We have a reminder, April 18, July 18, and October 17 will be our scheduled dates. We're also talking about potentially having a holiday party and kind of legislative outlook before legislature goes into session in December. So that's kind of one of the discussion items as to whether or not we move forward with that. Topics, potential topics for each of those meetings. Looking at council best practices and how each of us, as a subsection, how each of us are addressing this hate speech issue. Looking at DEI as a topic and how each of our cities are addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion. Housing is another possible topic, city budgets and how we're dealing with revenues. It's another topic that we are thinking about addressing. If you, by the way, if you have any ideas or other things you think we'd like to address, be sure to let me know. I'd be happy to raise those topics and bring them forward to the Executive Board. In addition to that, I was asked by the Pugil Sound Regional Council to chair the Vision Awards Committee. And in honor of the Lunar New Year, I'm wearing my dragon, Year of the Dragon tie. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so for my report, on the 2nd of February, I attended the Seashore Transportation Forum. And we got two letters out of that meeting. A letter in support of our Raze Grant from the Seashore Transportation Forum and the City of Shoreline. So that was worth getting up at 7:30 in the morning. And then on the 6th, I attended the Economic Alliance of Snohomish County's Transportation Update. I like to chime in or at least listen in when they do some important, to me at least, topics and transportation is one of them. And on the 7th and 8th, last Wednesday and Thursday, I attended the AWC Conference in Olympia. And that is always a lot of information and networking and getting to know what the other cities are doing and that they're having the same problems we are and we're having the same, what's the opposite of problems? Anyways, and then on the 14th, which was last night, our 32nd District Team, Representative Cindy Liu and Lauren Davis, put on a town hall online on Zoom. And they're really busy down there and they got a lot of things accomplished. And it was really nice hearing them talk about a lot of their pluses and things that they're working on and to mention our city because they have several cities in their district and Mount Lake Terrace, all of Mount Lake Terrace is part of it. So, of course, we're one of their important ones. And I could not make it to the Lunar New Year Celebration in Edmunds this year because I had a wedding to attend. However, I just wanted to let you know that last year I did attend that event outdoors in the pouring rain for the whole time. And I was soaked to my skin, but it was still a lot of fun. And I'm hopefully going to make it next year. And I'm glad it was indoors this year, but it was also a very nice day. And then we talked about the military. And I just wanted to mention that my boss at my job just told me that her sister-in-law, and this is a military family, everybody in it's military. She's, her sister-in-law is going to become a general and a female general. So I was really impressed. And they're going to be celebrating that. The whole family is going to go over there and so forth. So anyways, I thought that was something else.
She in the Army?
Pardon?
Army?
I think they're all Air Force, but.
Good for her.
Maybe, maybe one part of the family is not. I don't know. And that is the end of my report. So, we're going to move on now to new business. Does anyone have any new business?
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that we do have probably another topic for our retreat coming up, April 27. And that's going to be what we're going to do with the Recreation Pavilion and the Swimming Pool. So something to kind of think about. With that, we should also take a look at the 2018 Economic Vitality and Town Center Task Force recommendations and just see what they kind of came up with. And be prepared. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? I guess we're going to move on to adjournment. Oops, I didn't reuse this earlier. We're going to adjourn. Thank you.